Good evening. Welcome to the Buffalo Bulletin's City Council Primary Debate between Erin Casey, Travis Lawrence, Scott Madison, and Logan Nimick. My name is Rob Hicks. I'm the publisher of the Buffalo Bulletin, and I will be moderating tonight's debate. The format of tonight's debate is we'll have opening statements of two minutes for each candidate, followed by, I believe we're going to ask each candidate two questions. And they'll be given an opportunity to answer that, they'll be given two minutes to answer that, followed by a one-minute response from each opponent, and finally, back to the candidate who was asked a question for a one-minute rebuttal.
Hi, I'm Erin Casey. We, my husband moved to Buffalo in 2011 and decided to make Buffalo our home. I'm, we've lived, I'm originally from Nevada. We've, we've lived a lot of different places. We've lived in Michigan, Texas, California. I've lived in New York, lots of different places, North Dakota. But Buffalo's our home, and I'm running our own responsible government.
Thank you. Travis?
I'd like to start by thanking Rob Hicks and the Buffalo Bulletin for providing this forum and coming up with a list of questions that are important that the voters need to know about also. I'd like to thank my family for supporting me, as well as my employer for Northern Banking. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a fourth-generation Buffalo resident, born and raised. I see my kindergarten teacher and my fourth-grade teacher out in the crowd today. Have been in banking for 25 years, primarily as a commercial lender doing business loans. And so I've read a lot of financial statements. I've banked a lot of for-profit, nonprofit, government-sponsored entities during that timeframe. Also have volunteered considerably on a lot of boards, specifically here in Buffalo as treasurer of the Chamber of Commerce, and then as chairman of Vision Buffalo, which was a committee set up by the city council, and then also as treasurer, the current treasurer of Joko First, which is Casey-Johnson County Buffalo Economic Development Board that's responsible for economic development in our community.
Thank you, Travis. Scott Madison?
And once again, I'd like to thank Rob Hicks and the Bulletin for putting on these forums so we can inform the voters of what is going on. I guess I'd like to start at the fourscore. Seventeen years ago, my great-grandfather came forward to this county to insert a prospering opportunity. And yet now, almost a century later, I am still here, living and working in Buffalo. And the reason that I'm still here is because it is a beautiful place to live. It's a wonderful place to raise a family. It is a, we have all the beautiful amenities around here that bring people here. And part of the reason I want to be on the city council is to help keep Buffalo a great place to live and do, and make sure that we keep that quality of life that brings people from all over the country here, that brings people to our location. Everybody that comes here falls in love with the area. A little bit of my background, I've been in construction over 25 years, building mainly residential and some smaller commercial projects. I've also served on the Chamber Board, BDA, Department of Homeland Security, Church Boards, all sorts of organizations and different civic groups. I understand how meetings should be conducted and how to, I previously served on city council for a little over six months in 2012, fulfilling an unexpired term, and narrowly lost reelection after that time. So I do know how the city operates as well. And one of the things, I want to be able for the public to contact me. I don't want to, I don't have any personal agendas. I want to do the will of the people. I want the people to contact me. I want to represent all of Buffalo, including those people that live outside the city limits that can't vote for me directly but have businesses or work in the city and are affected by the decisions of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Logan Nimick?
Evening, folks. My name is Logan Nimick, and I was born and raised here. Third generation on both my mother's side and my father's side. I spent a little time up in Sheridan studying business administration. The reason I'm running is I want to, I want to focus on fiscal responsibility and economic development, keep our, keep our little town floating and do what I can to help improve our place here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question goes to Erin. Erin, do you feel that you have a fresh perspective you can bring to the city council? Please be specific and tell us how you will, you will utilize that perspective to help the citizens of Buffalo.
Yes, I think I have a fresh perspective, and I have learned, I'm married to a pilot, so we've, we've moved around a lot. He's been laid off. We've been in between jobs, and we've learned how to stretch a dollar and get the most out of it. And I think with that perspective, I can, I can help Buffalo with the possible limited funds that they could be facing in getting our, the three prioritizing what's important and keeping the important things, infrastructure, public safety, and then prioritizing the rest from there as to how we keep Buffalo as wonderful and great as it is.
Thank you. Travis?
So I'm going to comment on my fresh perspective.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I think that I bring a number of things, or would bring a number of things to the city council that would add to the team that's already there. Primarily, again, my financial background in understanding budgets and financial statements and making decisions that relate to that. One experience that I did have when I was living in Cheyenne was I was the finance chair for United Way, and the county allocated $2 million to distribute to organizations throughout that community. And so every single organization that applied, I looked at their financials and went through them, determined their budgets and their financial solvency. And so I bring that to the city of Buffalo in addition to banking municipalities in my previous, or during my career. So I think that's the perspective that I would bring to it, you know, conservative in nature, both as a banker and also personally.
Thank you. Scott?
I guess one of the biggest things I could bring to the city council as a fresh perspective and my knowledge base is my years of construction experience. I could help the city council, other members, understand that the capital construction projects such as the Robin Street reconstruction, I can understand plans and read the plans and specs and give them another educated opinion on that. I'm also pretty tech savvy, and I think there's some ways we could use technology to help streamline some of our processes and some of the things we do in the city to maybe stretch a dollar a little farther if we could find a way to make, make an easier way to do things to save manpower and use technology in place of manpower and save a little bit of labor. I'm also active with a lot of the Chamber of Commerce and some other civic groups and during the events, and I interact with the street department, the chief of police, and everybody, working with everybody in the parks department to, for all these events to try to, I have a pretty good working relationship with all of the different department heads in this town. So it would be, that would help to, to further the, you know, my abilities on council with my knowledge of working with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan?
I'd like to think that I have a fresh perspective. As far as why I do that, I founded my own advertising agency that I've been working at for over a year and a half now. And with that, for business owners out there, you understand that effective budgeting is crucial. If you don't budget properly, chances are you're not going to be able to keep your doors open longer than six months. So with that, that translates into government work, trying to keep things, keep your expenditures lower than your income so you can stash away for a ready-made and work on that effect spending. With the ad agency, it shows that I can think outside the box. I can creatively solve problems that are, are placed in front of me. And I think that that's very important, especially when you talk, start talking about things like economic development and how to get infrastructure done properly. So with that, I do, yes, I do have a fresh idea, a fresh perspective.
Thank you. We're going to change the format a little bit and move to the second question. Travis, what projects do you feel the city should prioritize with budgets and why? And what areas would you cut if necessary?
The, the projects to prioritize them, I think depending on the enterprise fund, if it's sewer or water, you know, what those need to be done, and I guess plan for that accordingly and as a separate thing. But then looking at the general fund and prioritizing what needs to be done in the city, I would say first and foremost, the focus should be on budget. We recently approved a $1.4 million budget deficit, and knowing that there's approximately $3 million in reserves for operations, if that budget actually comes to fruition, then we're looking at a two-year time horizon as to what needs to be done. Now, as far as what areas to cut and what we look at doing in regards to that, is first and foremost, I think all of the departments would need to look at their expenditures and try to minimize those. We've heard make do with what, you know, make do with what you have, try to make those dollars stretch. But that can only go so far. And what approving a $1.4 million budget deficit tells you is that right now, the city is living beyond its means, and so, you know, cut operational expenses, and then at that time, it's a matter of cutting services and the corresponding overhead associated with those services. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott?
Good. Yeah, I think the biggest thing to prioritize is, is stellar infrastructure, streets, waters, sewer, that type of thing. When I was on council back in 2012, they just were completing the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant. So those facilities are in pretty good shape right now. They have ongoing, every year there is water line and sewer line maintenance or replacement. They do a little bit every year. Streets, they do, they spend a couple hundred thousand a year to, on street maintenance to try to keep that up and in addition to the bigger projects, just to try to keep the chip ceiling on all our roads in town. And that's, I think that's pretty vital, to keep what we have in good shape and try to keep the, the, the infrastructure usable for longer term. It's cheaper to maintain it as we go than have to make, do a major reconstruction down the road. And I think that's the biggest area, just let's stretch our dollars as far as possible and make them go the farthest.
Thank you. Logan?
There's two areas, I believe firmly, that we need to focus on. First is infrastructure, and the second is economic development. Now, as far as infrastructure goes, I think that we need to focus more on our residential streets, our residential curb gutter, and our residential sub-street structures. We've got gorgeous main avenues. You look down Main Street, Port Street, Hart Street, they're gorgeous. The roads are well taken care of, and that's great. But I do think that it's crucial that we provide those same, that same quality of infrastructure to our citizens. You go over in the southeast corner of Buffalo here, and there's places where the road just ends. There's no curb, there's no, there's no gutter, there's no sidewalk, there's nothing there. Just the asphalt ends in its people's yards. And I don't think it's right that we focus so much on our main avenues and let our residential areas deteriorate. Now, as far as economic development goes, I think that the Joint Powers Board is some, is an entity that we need to work very carefully with and work to, to bring new business in. Not talking large businesses, talking smaller companies, something to, when we have a bust season over in Gillette, something to lessen the blow that we feel from, from their economic turmoil. As far as cutting the budget goes, I've looked at the budget and I've had talks with people down in city hall, and we're operating pretty well on, on the bare minimum right now. So when you start talking cutting the budget, you're going to start talking about cutting cuts. We'll worry about that when it happens, but right now, I think we should focus on economic development.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, as far as projects that should be prioritized, and infrastructure, I think is a big one for me, especially our roads. When we repair a road or have to dig up the road to repair a pipe under the road, it, they replace it with chip and seal, which is tar and gravel. And there's a lot of streets in this town that were nice paved streets until repairs need to be done, and then now we end up with chip and seal. And I think we can do better than chip and seal. I think there should be something that's better. I think we need to get in there and find out what we can do that would be better to maintain our streets and to keep them nice. Our citizens here deserve better than chip and seal. And then public safety is, is another one. I did a ride-along with the police department, and I learned a lot with our police department. They do a really good job, and I think they need our support, and we should back them up as much as we can.
Thank you. Travis, do you have any rebuttal?
Yeah, in, in regards to the prioritizing and capital projects, you know, the city does have a capital improvement plan, and I think based off of the needs, the department heads go through and prioritize that list as far as, you know, what we want to accomplish maybe in a five-year time horizon. And so it's a matter of, if it's a major road project like Robin, it's a matter of saving of 1% funds so we can possibly match a grant and complete that project.
Thank you. Scott, the next question is for you. In light of diminishing revenues, what projects can the city work with the county and/or school district to improve the quality of life in our community? Please be specific as to how these partnerships would work.
As far as some of the past partnerships, some of the water lines and roads and stuff down around the schools were paid for with the city, county, and school district funds, all three together. That's one area that, any area benefits the schools as far as water and streets, it'd be nice if they could help support the city there because it is because of the schools that we have the increased traffic on burrage. And one of the reasons it was done last year, the number of vehicles dropping kids off to school and there, there's ways, accounting has been helping us on some of these projects and helping the city with financial support on some of the projects, but not that many. There's not a lot of, I guess, opportunities where they, where all three can work together where it's beneficial to all three entities. And most of the time, it's only beneficial to two of the three, and we could do just the school, the city, or just city and county. And they do do that at times, like the economic development studies, they, it might even the city, the county, and Joko First, all three entities input. And I, we need to search out more partnerships, search out more ways that we can use all sources of funding because even now, next year, they won't have the, the police officers in the school because the, the school district lost the grant funding for that, and the city wasn't able to fund that by themselves. So if we want that back, we have to find alternate sources of funding, and maybe that would be an option to get the city, county, and schools together. And there's, I can't think of any others off the top of my head. I know the South Tank Water Pipeline right across the road here, that was, since that benefit to high school, they were, they did, the school district did put in some money to rebuild that water line in addition to the county and the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan?
The sales tax being down 28%, I think that economic development is going to solve a lot of our issues. I think that working with the Joint Powers Board, working with the commissioners, and you know, as it pertains to the school board, work with the school board. But as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I think that we need to focus on the Joint Powers Board and work to bring in these, these new, new businesses and help the businesses that we have here grow and expand across the region if they choose. So that's, that's where I'd like to put most of the focus.
Thank you. Erin?
Well, as far as partnerships and diminishing revenues, after doing my ride-along with the police department, I did ask a lot of questions and learn a lot. I learned from talking to the police chief that our school resource officer, we're going down from two school resource officers to one school resource officer. And yes, the city is picking up the cost for that because the school is short on funds. And the dare program will still continue. So I think that's a good example of our partnerships and then working together in the city. And I'd like to see more of that happen, but at the same time, we have to be careful with our funds, I could with, with our money. Maybe some of these partnerships could happen with volunteer services or people supporting organizations that they believe in. And that's, lots of that.
Thank you. Travis?
With diminishing revenues, how can we, the city, partner with the county and also the school district to improve our quality of lives? Well, there's a number of ways. It's all about making more with less, and there's a current partnership going on right now, Tri-County's marketing plan between Johnson, Sheridan, and Campbell County, and that is in the area of economic development. So trying to partner and pool the knowledge and resources of the area for the betterment of the area. Now, how can we specifically partner with the county? You know, protective services, that's one great example. We have a police force, they have a sheriff's and deputy force. And so, you know, making sure that maybe we could partner with them on duplicating patrol areas and things like that. Also with the county building and jail dispatch services, things like that, that'd be a good partnership with the county. With school district, it comes down to primarily maybe recreation dollars, the rec district. In addition to that, the city owns the Wyoming C.A. building, and you know, the school district, it does provide benefits that the school doesn't have. And so I think maybe partnering dollar-wise with, in recreation.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I agree with the others. Yeah, this time with diminishing revenue, every, all three entities are short on funds, and all three are looking a way to economize. And I think that's the biggest way we can, yeah, streamline and try not to duplicate services between three entities and Joko First and all these other people. So we're not spending money doing the same thing so we can let everybody do what they're good at. And I guess with the city cops and the sheriff's deputies, the city is the only one that runs 24 hours a day. They were the only ones on call between, I believe, the higher patrol shuts down at 11:00, sheriff deputies like midnight, and from there till early morning, it's only the city cops on, on force. That's why there are more city cops than our sheriff's deputies. But that's, that's one thing where, yeah, the city handles. I think they pay for most of the dispatch, but the county pays for all the detention officers in the jail. So it's kind of a shared responsibility there too. It helps by working with everybody, but it's, it's still, there's a limit to what we can cut and still keep our same level of services. We just need to try to eliminate any duplication between different entities and try, and just streamline. All we can do is that if we can save even 1% on everybody's budget, it will help in these late times. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan, you've said that you believe that economic development should be a function of city government and that you'd like to emphasize that. Could you please provide some specific examples of what the city could do to help develop the economy and how that might be paid for?
Absolutely. The other day, I was on 307 radio with Mark Bentley, and he asked me a very similar question. And I told him that I think that it's the responsibility of the city to pursue, pursue these, these outside businesses, to convince them to come in and employ our people and help build upon our economy rather than going to Sheridan or Gillette, which has a, a larger consumer base than Buffalo does. And he asked me, "Well, who's gonna, who's gonna pursue them, Logan?" I said, "Well, if it comes down to it, I'll pursue them." Because we need, we need a city councilman that's going to hit the streets, who's going to make the cold calls if that's what it takes, do everything in their power to ensure that the goals that they, they talk about, to get them elected, get accomplished. So I'd like to see, you know, if it, if it takes me calling these, these tech companies and convincing them to come in, or these small manufacturing companies to come in, then that's what I'll do. As far as how it's going to get paid for, that's a conversation to have with the entity as they come in. If there's existing real estate that they can move into, the city's not going to have to put any, any bill. But if they want us to, to start building infrastructure, if it's in the best interest of the city, then that's a conversation that needs to be had. I'm not saying the city needs to put the entire bill there, but I think there needs to be a conversation there, an agreement between how many people they're going to employ, how long they're going to be in the city, and how many dollars they project to bring into the, into the area.
Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, well, first, I think, for one thing, Buffalo does not have a shortage of entrepreneurs. There are a lot of young people that have great ideas, they want to work for themselves. And I think the city's role in that should be to just let businesses run on their own, let them open a business, let them keep ordinances to a minimum to where there's not more hoops for them to jump through just to open a business. Between our federal, state, and our city government, there are enough things that a business owner has to do to run a business. And if we can keep those ordinances low and taxes where they are over there, or if we could, I think that would be enough incentive for people to have their business and keep it around.
So to that end, with, with the diminishing budgets, how would you, how do you foresee actually lowering taxes?
Well, I don't know if I see lowering taxes, but I think we can keep them where they are for now without, I don't see need to raise taxes.
Thank you. Travis?
In, in the realm of economic development, what can the city do? The, the main thing the city can do is create a conducive environment. The city cannot directly do anything, I don't believe to, or nor would the city or the city council want to directly bring business in. I think that creating the environment and also supporting those experts that are in our community and are tasked with that duty. So, you know, the city should fully support the KC, Buffalo, Johnson County Economic Development Group and rely on them to bring their expertise to the table in addition to the state of Wyoming and the Wyoming Business Council and all of the great services that come to business expansion and business owners in the state. Maybe the city could directly get involved if we are ordering a business as far as the city owns land, and we could provide land, or we could set up a deal where we subsidize or forego tap fees or water bills, things, things in that nature.
Thank you. Scott?
I think the biggest thing we can do for economic development is make it a business friendly climate, make it easy for a business to get started, make it remove any major hurdles that the city has to expand a business or open a business. But as far as the, what the city can provide for a new business here, we're not in a cash rich position where we can afford to give incentives and afford to give them buildings and land and everything. We don't technically have the money to do that. There's been businesses, I don't know, six, eight years ago, there's a manufactured housing There's been businesses, I don't know, six, eight years ago, there was a manufactured housing company that was looking at relocating here in the city. Spent quite a bit of time looking into it, trying to bring them here, but in the end, uh, they couldn't get the financing. So they decided not to, they, they didn't show up. But the, uh, city ended up spending quite a bit of time and effort trying to entice and to bring them here and they didn't get anything out of it. And that's part of it too. We have to vet these candidates and the businesses and make sure that they are serious about moving here, that they are serious about wanting to relocate here and that they're financially able to move here. So if we do give them an incentive, a tax break for, a tax break on water, that they're here long enough and, and provide enough income through sales, tax revenue, or other income to actually pay back what the city gives to them. So we're just not giving them a, a free handout and then in the end, they, they can only stay a year. We don't, we never have our money to support. And that's kind of, we've got to be watchful for that. And now that we have Joko first and SAG groups here, that they are better able to field those calls and they are going to trade shows and trying to work on economic development. And I think it's in the city's best interest to provide financial support for them so they can do the economic development that we're not skilled at.
Scott, a short follow-up. You've mentioned hurdles. Do you see any hurdles presently that, uh, that might, uh, be removed that could help with economic development?
Uh, there's not really any, I guess, major hurdles, but there's, I'm not, there's not a lot of, uh, good property right now for development for the specific types of things like a tech park or something. But that's one thing that the city is looking at, using their land out by the wastewater treatment plant that is available and unused now, but we no longer need. The pond with our wastewater treatment, they have excess land available. They're talking about putting their tech park out there and be able to sell some land that's currently unused, that they don't have a need for, if they can develop it and bring some income off that land, that would help. I guess the biggest thing, and, and the other part over by Uray, they have, there's some land there available by the Mount Metal Wall building, but the water, the sewer is a long ways away. And to get it to where it needs to go is gonna be expensive, it's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars. The main trunk lines in there that are not there, so that's, they're in some place where we have land, we don't have the infrastructure in the main city, the streets, water, and sewer there. And maybe the city can help with that, they can't afford to do it all, but they could maybe do some work in kind and, or help with part of the, of the funding and, and part of the process. I think that as far as business, our rules and regulations here are pretty minimal. There's not many things they have to do to be able to, to open a business. Design ordinance is not that intrusive, it, it gives guidelines. And if there's always a, a way at the end, if you don't like what the design ordinance says, you can appeal it and appeal the planning commission, get variance for if you wanna do something different. And they have the right to approve it or whatever. So there is a way around all this city complication right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan?
Just to clarify, I don't think that we need to bring in these giants to choke out local business because A, it's not feasible to bring in these, these massive companies. And B, I don't wanna choke out our local business. I think it's important that we support those businesses and give them the tools, like I said earlier, to expand across the region if that's what they choose to do. There are many restrictions on our local businesses at the current. I, I think, I've been reading up on the sign ordinance, I don't completely agree with it. I understand the thought behind it, but, uh, I think that it's a bit extensive for what we need. Local tax doesn't exist. So the biggest tax is sewer and water. So much like what Scott said, it's a lot of incentive for people to start a business here, but a lot of people don't know about these things unless you get in and really get elbow deep in the, in the legislature and read the ordinances and read, um, read the tax structures. So absolutely, I think it's important that we support local business, but at the same time, you know, much like what Scott said, we need to support, um, the Joint Powers Board and help them bring in these local, or bring in new businesses. But like I said, give our small businesses, our local businesses, the tools to grow and expand.
Thank you. Aaron? What is the primary function of city government? And how do you ensure, pardon me, and how do you plan to ensure that takes place?
Well, the primary function of, um, city government is, um, you work with people, so you need to listen to your citizens of Buffalo and their concerns, their needs, and even their wants. You need to provide the good infrastructure for roads, sewer, water, all the things that people need to get by. Public safety, all of that stuff. And, um, I will listen to the people that call me, email me, Facebook message me, stop me on the, on the street and chat with me. I am a very good listener and I'll listen and I, I'll vote accordingly according to how the citizens of Buffalo would like me to vote.
So Aaron, if, uh, if for example, you, uh, see that we're not able to provide that infrastructure with the present, uh, funding that the city has and declining, would you support going to the legislature then, lobbying the legislature to, uh, get cities more monies which may entail actually raising taxes?
Not raising taxes, no. When, when, one thing I've learned being married and with my husband's career is when you get laid off or your community job change, you don't get a pay raise just because you got bills to pay. You make do with what you have. And the city, we need to make do with what we have. And so I would not support raising taxes.
Travis?
I'm not sure what percentage of the, the, um, community out there pays much attention, uh, unless their water isn't working or they can't flush their toilet or their garbage isn't picked up. Or they're trying to drive down a road and their car sinks into a pothole. Uh, you know, those are the primary functions of the city. However, you know, I believe that the city provides the community much more than just those basic services. The city should also provide or help provide quality of life for its residents, um, such as the, you know, the great park system that we have here in the community. We have a great trail system. Uh, the city gives dollars to organizations, uh, for, to people that don't have a voice and those organizations are those people's voice. They give dollars towards economic development to that group. They give dollars to the Chamber of Commerce that, uh, helps out local businesses. And so I think that's a, uh, also a very key and important part that the city needs to play and provide for our residents.
Thank you. Scott?
I think the biggest, the primary function of the city government is they, it is a representative government. We are representing the cities of Buffalo and all the residents of the city of Buffalo. We are elected to represent you. We, we can't handle all the city residents trying to make a decision in a meeting where, that's why we have the four councillors and the mayor to make those decisions that need to be made on a day-to-day basis to, to operate the city. And that, and as the city councilor, the mayor, we empower the department heads to make the smaller decisions to, to keep the city running, to keep our streets dry with all our water and sewer flowing and keep our parks green, the golf course green and keep the everything. All of, there are many things we have, keep the bathroom in Crisler Square clean for the tourists. And there's a lot of things that the city does that people may not even realize and all the recreation opportunities that the city provides, the city pool, the tennis courts. And there's a lot of things the city does behind the scene. Some people only see the big visual stuff, but there's a lot of other things too. And the 1% funds the city provides for all sorts of organizations to, to help them in, in their activities.
Thank you. Logan?
I believe that the function of the, of the city government is to keep the roads paved, keep the, the curb and gutter up to par, keep the sewage and water flowing, keep the parks maintained and provide a certain level of, of recreational activities to people. And I, I think the city's done a very good job up to this point to, to do that and, and keep, keep things functioning and keep things flowing. I think that, uh, our, our objective moving forward is to continue to provide that level of, of service to everybody, you know? Maintain that, that level of security and, uh, and move forward that way.
Thank you. Aaron?
I'm good.
Okay. Travis, Buffalo's been named one of the top western towns of the United States. Are the, are there things that the city council can do to help maintain or improve Buffalo's image?
Uh, being in one of the top western towns, uh, in the country, and what can the city do to, uh, uh, continue on with that credibility? And, you know, uh, maybe to start off with a joke, rip up the sidewalks and put, uh, planks down and turn it into a true western town. But no, I, I think, uh, when you look at a, a western town and what all does that entail? There are certain values that, uh, are distinguished with, uh, the, the term a western town. You know, doing what you say you're gonna do, um, you know, trying to, uh, uh, make the next day better. And so what, you know, what the city can do is, is just keep the, the end goal in mind. And, you know, are we doing, uh, what are we doing? Is it going to improve the, uh, quality of our residents? Is it gonna improve our image? And I think the city can play a big part in maintaining, uh, that, that western town culture.
Are there some specifics that you would, uh, that, that you can see, um, that, that, that the city can do in terms of, uh, specific action items?
I'll have to think about that and come back around in my closing.
Okay. We just had a little extra time, so I thought I'd, so Scott?
Yeah, I think that the western town image of Buffalo has a lot to do just with the people we have here, the great people, the, the quality people, the friendly, approachable individuals that make everybody feel welcome, even if they're a new tourist, they've never met before there. And that, that image alone helps to, but people see this as different than the big city. They see that we're a little more laid back, a little more relaxed and not, and, and part of it too is, you know, with our, our police force doing their job, keeping it a safe place, like keeping it a good place, keeping the security up. And our city employees, Parks Department, Public Works, keeping the, the grass green, keeping the lawns mowed, keeping everything looking good as you drive through town. That makes a big impression when you drive into town, see everything all cleaned up and, and, and looking good. And I think that's the biggest thing, is just embrace what we have and, and try to keep up, keep the, everything that we have now and try not to do anything to impede that. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan?
When you start talking about what makes a town feel western, I think it's more about the mentality than it is the aesthetics. I think as far as city council's role and city government's role to, uh, to maintain that, I think it's more about leading by example and, and showing that, you know, you're going to do what you say you're going to do. You're gonna roll up your sleeves and you're gonna go to work and you're going to give your shirt, give the shirt off your back to somebody who needs it. I think that's more what it, uh, is more what it's about than it is making sure that everybody's walking down the streets wearing a ten-year-old hat.
Aaron?
Um, as far as our city's image goes, I, I think it's great that we made the, the top western, uh, towns, that's awesome. And the city does a great job with the good leadership they have and the role they play in that. But I think it's more that it's, it's, it's not just the city council and the city, it's the people that live here. It's how we treat each other. It's, you know, you'll stop on the side of the road and help someone that's having trouble and you don't even know them, you really never see them again. So it's, it's the attitude and, uh, of, of people that live here. It's just, it's how we live. And it's one of the reasons, the big reasons that my husband and I decided to make Buffalo our home. And was a desire factor, we're gonna buy a house here, we're gonna live here, this is where we're gonna stay. That's just something we have here, you can't, it, it won't change. It's, it's who we are as the citizens of Buffalo.
Thank you. Travis?
Yeah, I think to follow up on that, the specific items, you know, uh, in the, the getting deemed, uh, being, you know, having western qualities, you know, we've touched on kindness. So specifically what the city can do, its employees, you know, provide good customer service, uh, down at City Hall. It's city councilmen and women, uh, it's employees and the, the, uh, public works and also police force. You know, uh, maybe also keeping up the image of the city, you know, making sure that our corridors are clean and inviting as people pull into town. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, Wyoming statute allows for a five-mile radius buffer zoning around city limits. Would you be in favor of enacting this as Douglas has? Why or why not?
Yeah, I believe, you know, I didn't believe the city now, I think we have like a one-mile territory, extra territorial zone. But there are very few things that the city has input outside the city limits. But I, I think it would be helpful to have a little more, um, oversight as to what happens right outside our borders. And a lot of times the, some of the city that is, especially on the edges of town, you'll have city and county interspersed with, there's not, there's no clear line where the city limit starts and the county, and the, and the county ends. It's, there's boxes of county land inside of the state limits, but if they're not totally a hundred percent enclosed, they can't be forced to annex. So it would be nice if there was some way the city could help, um, steer them in the direction that would, because in most of those places that were at the edge of the city had eventually been annexed over the years. It may take five, 10, 20 years before they get landlocked and have to be annexed then. Then we have, then we, they annexed in, but yet they're, they're not up to city standards, their roads and water and sewer, then they have to try to bring that up to standards before they get annexed. And it's expense on their part. If we could help them provide a way to, to do that, I, I would be in favor of some type of, uh, it'd probably have to be county-wide zone or something that would have a zoning area around the city of Buffalo. And I don't believe the city can enforce that. I think it'd have to be at the county level because the city's only able to enforce.
Let me interrupt you for a minute, but Scott, uh, you, the city is able to, within the five-mile radius, I guess I was not very clear. The city is able by Wyoming law to create a five-mile buffer zoning area for, because that's where they're obviously going to grow to.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it sounds like you're saying that, that you would be in favor of looking?
I would be in favor in researching that and looking into it and finding more details about it. But having some guidelines, I, I wouldn't, I don't think we'd wanna make them have to bend over to the same and fall in line with the same restrictions that the city residents do when they're not annexed then. But it'd be nice to have some guidelines so we know where future annexation will, will happen. And if and when the time, they either want to annex or enforce to annex because they're landlocked, then they will be, the annexation process will be easier and cheaper for them because they're planned ahead and prepared for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Logan?
Right now, from a fiscal standpoint, I don't believe that it would be responsible to, to bring, you know, annex, uh, more subdivisions into the city. I think that right now, much like I talked to, I've talked about since I started running, I think that we should focus on the infrastructure that we have currently. Until that's up to par, until that's, uh, that's to the same level that our main avenues are, I don't think that it's a good idea to, uh, to bring on the additional cost of annexing in these locations. Sure, we're gonna have some extra income from the, the people that live in there, but... Sure, we're gonna have some extra income from the people that live in there, but as a whole, I don't see the cost, I don't see the benefits outweighing the cost.
Aaron?
Rob, I'm not sure I understand the question of where you're going with that, but I'm gonna take a stab at it. For the five-mile buffer zone, I think that's something, if we were to do that, we'd have to definitely look at the cost, listen to the residents in those areas and what they want. There's a reason people live in the county and not the city, and, you know, I don't know if there's necessarily a reason to change that. You know, there's just a lot of things to look at for that. I mean, it would, it would take a lot of research and a lot of talking to people to see if that's what they want.
Thanks, Aaron. Travis?
You know, a lot goes into this question. You mentioned the word zoning, and it causes people to be standoffish, especially because you're dealing with private property owners and telling them or influencing what is happening to them. I think first and foremost, I would probably defer to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they work for the city and they are the experts, they would do the research and make recommendations as far as having public feedback and meetings and gathering up the information and would help me make a sound decision. Now, without that research and knowledge and knowing about it off the cuff, you know, I would say I would probably be in support of that, and I think it would help clean up some of the corridors around Buffalo in addition to, you know, I guess, making, improving the entire area. So off the cuff, that would be my response. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott?
Okay, I get a couple of quick things to respond to. As far as the annexation, I think that when we do annex, most of the cost for the annexation is covered by the developer, those that want to annex, the person that's annexing it. When you do annex, then you end up having to pay more property taxes as you have to pay the city taxes in addition to the county taxes. So it does bring in a little more income when they annex, but there are still problems. But, yeah, there are areas like water, sewer, and streets and some of the main infrastructure where it'd be nice to have a little control within that five-mile zone, but as far as like building permits and stuff, that's, I don't think we can enforce building permits out of the county that way. But I think there's, there's other things we need to look at. There's a lot of residents in the city of Buffalo that live within that five-mile zone. It's amazing number, up on Richardson Park, you know, and out French Grid Road, out Red Hills Road, down Trading, and a lot of places that are close to town, but yet they, they wanna live close to town, but they don't wanna live near the city limits. Some of the benefits are, yeah, they can have livestock and stuff in the county, and there's other things they can have in the county that they can't have in the city. We need to be very careful what we do, is that the county zoning, they've been working on for years and years and years, and there's still, people are pushing back against that. And if we try to add more zoning to the city, I can just see the public crying and the public causing problems and not wanting, wanting in. We need to research it and spend some time seeing if it is a good idea and how it would benefit Buffalo, and if it won't benefit Buffalo, we don't do it. But if there are good benefits to Buffalo, then we should pursue it. And it's, but it's gonna take much more research to see if it is a viable alternative.
Thank you. Logan? The city and county have put several million dollars into a sports complex owned by the city that has still not been finished. What things do you see could be finished, and do you feel it should be a priority to finish the project? How would you secure the funding to do it?
I think that it's sad that it hasn't been finished yet. I think that should, should have taken care of a long, long time ago. I'm not sure exactly what we could do to finish it, finish it properly. I know that we've got the lights taken care of, we've got the seating taken care of, and we've got the, a lot of wiring issues that were out there taken care of. At this point, I think it's something that needs to be pushed down the list a little bit farther, because it's up to the, up to the point where it can be used and it can be utilized by, by the public. But I don't want it to see, I don't want to see it turning to a money pit, is my concern. As far as I'm concerned, the job should have been done right the first time. It shouldn't have turned into, oh, well, this happened. And I understand that as far as construction goes, you know, there's always those unforeseen, you know, expenditures that come up, certain things that happen that weren't planned for but, you know, budgeted for in the event that something happens. But for it to have continued as far as it has and for it to still not be finished, how many years down the line, I think is, I don't want to say shameful, but I think that's the best way to put it. The job should have been done the first time, and it should have been overseen to ensure that it was going to be done the first time.
Aaron?
Well, as far as that sports complex, I think any, any project, including sports complexes, if you're gonna start a project, you do it, you make sure you have the funds to complete it from start to finish. You know, you get estimates from people, and, you know, even on my own house, I've had estimates done for work, and usually estimates, when the work's completed, doesn't go over the estimate by very much. I understand unforeseen things come up and happen, and you need to plan for those things too. And if you can't plan for those things, you shouldn't start the project. And as of right now, if we don't have the money to complete it, we don't have the money to complete it, and that's very unfortunate, but it might just be the way it is. It would be part of the reprioritizing what's important to Buffalo. And if the sports complex is more important than, say, the pool, then okay, we'll prioritize and see what we need to do to get it done.
Thank you. Travis?
Yeah, I think the city's approach to this should be no different than any other asset that the city owns or wants to develop. The city allocates a certain amount annually to do sidewalks and curb and gutter, and, you know, the sports field complex should have a long-term plan and budget accordingly for what we want to get done each year. Now, you know, this is another opportunity for partnership, where the city could partnership with the school district and also the rec district in allocating dollars annually towards improving the complex, because the school and kids are a user of that facility. So those are kind of the two solutions that come to mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I was actually on council for the, during the six months when I was on council in 2012, was in the middle of this sports field construction, and part of that was, you know, from a previous city planners and some other people were, were working to push that project through, even though when the bids came over the estimate, they said, okay, we'll cut out the lights and the bleachers so we can still get basics done. And they, they got it almost done, but part of the problem there that we're having now was that when they got done, the grates weren't right for the big field, and they had to cut that down, and then they cut through the sprinkler lines and they had to redo that. They hauled, they hauled dirt out, hauled back in, now they've re-levelled it. I'm not sure what the status is on that. The field, they had to redo the dirt work, it's the only other large field in town besides one of Persensky. So the Babe Ruth teams have to play at Persensky, even though there's three other fields at the sports field complex, they're all smaller fields, they're not the big field that they have on the south side of Persensky. So we're still happy to use Persensky for that right now until that field is in shape. Part of it, it took a couple of years to get the grass growing up there in the new sports field, and now that they've tore it apart and had to redo the level, now they have to try to get that grass growing again. And I think majority of the work they've done on to fix it has been by the city's Public Works Department to try to save some money and use their time when they have time to work on it. But, and as far as I know, I'm not sure if they're even using the soccer fields and stuff up there, if they're still using all the ones down at Meadowland. It's, it's kinda sad that we've got this multi-million dollar sports field complex that we're not using right. But we, the city needs to spend money to fix it, but I, I don't know where we're gonna find the money from.
Thank you. Logan?
Much like what Aaron said, I think that, that if we, we aren't able to finish the job, I mean, that's, that's pretty bad, but I do think that we need to, at some point, finish the job. I think that we need to push it down the line, budget for it though. We can't rob Peter to pay Paul, especially with the fiscal situation that we're in right now. But more importantly than that is the principle of the situation. The job needs to be done right the first time, and I think it's time that we don't let this become a precedent and we crack the whip and get the job done the first time.
Again, I'm writing on limited and responsible government. If elected, I work for the citizens of Buffalo. I wanna, I wanna talk to you. I wanna hear from you, what you want, that way we can prioritize what needs to be done accordingly. And I encourage you folks to talk to me. I'm on Facebook, cell phone, email, all that's available, you know, at the city office, and I've got, got a communication tonight if you want it. And I'll be around after the debate to chat if you'd like to chat with me.
Thank you. Travis?
Again, thank you Buffalo Wolfen for doing this, and thanks to the community for coming out and listening to us. I'll start off with talking about my background a little bit more and what I've learned, starting off with my family. And one thing that I've learned through my family is to help out others when you can. I was the president of the Chamber, I ran the Kiwanis organization in Cheyenne, Wyoming, which is the largest Kiwanis organization in the world. We had, it fluctuated between 400 and 450 members, and it's a seven-year commitment. I went through the chairs and served that. And what I learned from that, if you've ever been involved in a volunteer organization, you get a lot of opinions, and what I learned from that is building consensus, you know, and teamwork, and trying to manage and direct, not employees, but volunteers. United Way, when I was the finance chair for that, you know, I analyzed 40, 50 different nonprofit organizations, went through their budget process, and have an understanding for what makes them a going concern and solvent. The time at the Chamber here in Buffalo, when I was the treasurer, also going through the budgets and making sure the health of the Chamber was good. But what I learned also during my time at the Chamber was the different business interests that our community and business owners have here in Buffalo. During my time as chairman of Vision Buffalo here in Buffalo, reporting directly to the city council, what I learned from that is reviewing the city plan and also the Buffalo Downtown Plan, and what all went into those, all of the interviews, all of the public meetings, all of the industry meetings, to get the feedback as to what our community wants. Joko first, currently the treasurer, what I learned from there, or what I'm learning from there is all about economic development and the kind of things that we need to do as a community to aid in that area. And lastly, my 25 years in banking and my in-depth knowledge of financials, and I would bring that to the table, so thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing I wanna bring to the city council member is, I wanna be a representative for all members of the city above all, residents, and even for those that, that work and have businesses in the city and are affected by our decision every day, but may live outside of city limits and cannot vote for us. But I would, I would continue to, I guess, lead by example and continue my volunteerism. Yeah, you probably see me around most any event around town, major event, I'm always volunteering, helping out, and I think the city council member should be visible in helping out and, and showing their support and helping, be a visible part of the community. The reason I'm still here and living in this town, I could probably make more money elsewhere at working, but I choose to live here. I like the quality of life, I like the, I love the town, I like living here, and that's one of the reasons I've stayed here for so long. I wanna make sure that people are able to contact me, even my campaign signs, posters, literatures, everything out there has contact information on. There's ways to contact me, to get ahold of me. I want to do the will of the people. I don't, I don't have any personal agendas for myself, I wanna do what the public wants. I want the public to talk to me, I want them to tell me what the concerns are. I can't see everything in town, I can't see all the problems around it, but there's enough citizens of Buffalo, if they bring the problems to our attention, then maybe we could help facilitate and get some of those done. I guess going back to the sports field complex, that was, they had a couple of projects in that area where we didn't have a project manager on site for the city, and they didn't, we didn't have somebody checking up on everything every day. Even though I was on council in the middle of that project, I didn't, wasn't kept up to date what was going on, the chain of command isn't such that we knew what was going on all the time. Luckily for the Bird Street and the Lockham Street, both of those, they have, they've hired engineering firms to have a representative for the city to oversee the project, that's on the project every day, and that has helped tremendously to have somebody with the city that fits the current area, making sure things are done right. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Logan?
First off, I'd like to thank all of you for attending, because we're just up here talking about our ideas. Without you guys, none of this is possible, it doesn't work. Reviewing what I've talked about tonight, I think that economic development and infrastructure are paramount. I think those need to be the first things on our agenda and what we work on moving forward. Afterwards, after we close and everything, I'm planning on sticking around and answering questions, and I'd love to hear what you folks have to say, especially if you have a disagreeing viewpoint, because without bearing a viewpoint counter in mind, I can't hope to, you know, you can't hope to change my mind, and I can't understand the better, the other viewpoints out there. So look forward to talking to you.
Thank you, Logan. This concludes our debate. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Candidates, thank you for coming in and talking about some important issues. I know that some of these questions weren't easy, but I know that you all did an excellent job in outlining your viewpoints, and we sure appreciate you sharing those with the people of Buffalo. So, thank you.[1786.32][1786.32][applause]